I'd like to call to order the March 21st meeting of the Bryan City Schools Board of Education. If I could begin with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rob, if you could call the roll.
Emily Ewall.
Here.
Cinder Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Ryan Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcomb.
Here.
Thank you.
February minutes. Everybody has a copy of the February minutes. Any questions or items to address in the minutes? If not, accept the motion to accept those minutes. So, Rob.
One second.
Tom.
Cinder.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Public participation, I'm not aware of any tonight. So, moving on to communications. Cinder, if you could give us an update on that thing.
I would be glad to.
You want me to read it?
Sorry, Cinder.
That's all right. And if somebody would like to read this for me, that's absolutely fine. If you can read my writing here.
I'll be glad.
Oh, wait, look, there's a time. It's 2016. I do that all the time.
In lieu of Cinder's voice, Cinder did have some notes here. Summer fun classes for grades seven through nine for the fall of 2016 have been announced. They include math, easy P.I.
Easy as pie.
Easy as pie, robotics adventure, genius camp, and styles and smiles camp. The dates for those are June 6th through 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. And Cinder has been told that they will fill up fast. So, if you could, if you're interested and would like to, please contact four county as soon as possible. The deadline to register is May 6th. The classes are free, interactive, hands-on, and fun. To approve cost sheets for the 2016-17 school year, it looks like incoming juniors are going to have the lowest fees for tech class, or the lowest fees for tech class is going to be computer 3D modeling. The most expensive will be cosmetology. Keep in mind that that class is providing students, that class provides students pass the state test at the end of their senior year and that they will be a licensed cosmetologist.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I know what I wrote.
Cinder would also like to remind the public that the cosmetology salon is open Thursdays and Fridays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., offering hairstyling, coloring, perms, facials, manicures, pedicures, and that the four county cafe is open Wednesday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., offering delicious culinary concoctions from the four county trained chefs. Also, Skills USA competed on the, on the gold medal, competed, and the gold medal team winners were Corey Robinson Upshaw for opening, for the opening and closing team.
Yes.
And I believe that's all we hear for county. Thank you, Cinder.
Thank you, Ryan, for reading that, for reading this.
That's okay. We do have a presentation on the fly angling conservation club?
Yes, we'd like to present to the board for your consideration for approval, a new student activities club, the Fly Angling Conservation Club. And Mr. Ray is going to speak a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I'll fill in for Mr. Lake here. What he would like to do is start up a club for students, something that's a little bit different. First of all, outdoors experience. We have a, he's noticed a population of students that are wanting to take on some outdoor activities. So, what he was thinking is, he's found an interest in fly angling or fly fishing with students. So, he would like to propose for a club to get together. It would meet year round, and what they would do is focus on, in the winter months, which is the majority of the school year, actually tying the fly fishing. Yes, lures, exactly, thank you. Lures, the fly fishing lures, and working out techniques and gathering the equipment and being able to be ready for the spring and the fall when they actually can actually get out to some different locations in Northwest Ohio and try out their fly fishing skills. He's actually working with a representative from the state. State of Ohio is actually really yearning for grant money to be pushed to schools for some outdoor activity clubs like this. So, he's had a contact, and he's kind of waiting for approval on this club if it's actually going to go forward to see if he can get the grant money to actually fund this because he is realizing the equipment is going to need some purchase, purchase for this club and then the travel expenses as well to make sure that they have some good opportunities in the area to get to, so.
Where's the nearest place you could go fly fishing? I'm not really familiar with.
He's very familiar. He listed, he gave me a list of different streams in the area.
I mean, can you go in the Mami down there by Grand Rapids? I mean, you can fly fish in there. You have to, like, what kind of?
With the walleye fishing, I'm not sure if the fly fishing would fall in that category, but he did have some different locations of.
I mean, within an hour, within a couple hours?
Yes, within an hour. The farthest one he had listed away was within three hours. And the closest were right here in Williams County and just east of here. So, he's kind of scoped out, and he's kind of hoping that he can build some student interest if this goes through and if they take small groups to these different areas and at the most just get some outdoors experience and exposure. I think that's what his ultimate goal is and to educate them on the benefits of some different unique opportunities.
I don't know, depends on the size of the, of the number of kids interested. But what kind of size is he anticipating? Like 20 or six or?
I think, I mean, his eyes 20 would be about.
Total max?
My huge max. I think he's anticipating anywhere from half a dozen to a dozen students to be interested, which would be.
So, is this a club or a sport?
This would be a club. This would be a club where they would get together on a annual, or a bi-weekly basis, monthly basis, whenever they determine times to meet and.
So, is it a club tied into our, our science curriculum?
He teaches biology and life sciences. So, the correlation there to, to his curriculum, to what he teaches, would be, yes.
And it lists, in the proposal that we were given, it lists that equipment will be supported by Ohio DNR grants or student purchases, but it doesn't list specifically what that equipment may or may not be. Is, does he know or do we know or can we find out exactly what that, what that equipment list might be?
Yeah, we can definitely have him submit that. I think he was refraining, not knowing how much his budget was going to be before the equipment. But I know in discussions with him, he's talked about the actual reels themselves are expensive, and then you get into the waders and the actual lures as well. So, you're going to have some, some expenditures associated with it.
It's a little bit of a chicken or the egg scenario, and I get that, but.
Yeah.
If we could kind of have an idea of what those items might be.
Okay.
Good question. Would there be a supplemental with this?
No.
Because he'd be an advisor or anything at all?
No, he's agreeing to work on a volunteer basis.
You just used the word budget, so.
Right, well, he would have, before his budget, he would have to work with the grant money that he would receive in order to make those purchases.
So, the first step is approve by the board, second step the application for the grant.
Correct.
And formulation of the budget.
Yep. And he's looking at this for the 16-17 school year. So, he's trying to see if, if indeed this does get approved, he can then apply for the grant, know what kind of funds he'll be receiving to then implement when students return to school in fall.
But he does not, has not indicated the amount that he may be requesting for the grant?
At this time, no. I think he's waiting to see what he can get out of the grant or what the grant will, will give him and then kind of work, work from there.
Normally, in a grant, there either is a specific amount or else there's an amount that you have to request. Without a budget, without numbers attached to it, it's very difficult to understand the full scope of what this would entail.
Well, once he gets the numbers that he's expecting, then he can put the budget together. I mean, you have to have a different budget if you have six kids or 20. I think that that's kind of what Ryan alluded to. He also, we know that they, we've identified that there are grants available from Ohio DNR for this type of club, but without approval of the board, he won't be able to apply for the grant.
One of my questions that I have in my mind is just making sure that we understand, not only getting it up and running with buying the equipment, but we have to maintain this and continue to perpetuate this ongoing. So, what kind of equipment are we looking at to have to perpetuate? I think I said, like I said, there's a little bit of chicken or the egg scenario, and I get that, but at the same time, I would still kind of like to know, have an idea of then what we're looking at, and that's kind of the thought behind what I've got.
Yes, what I can do is definitely, with him not being present tonight, definitely pass on those questions, the exact amount, what he can receive from the grant passes along to you.
And we're not looking to make, take action tonight, so this is more of an informational.
I like the outdoors. I like the, get the kids outside away from the screen.
Is, is the possibility he would, would be working directly with DNR then? High Department of Natural Resources?
I don't know if he'd specifically be working with them. He might use them as resources to locate and, and find some of the locations that they're going to.
I don't know if that grant would be detailed in with a cooperative effort with them or not, but.
No, I don't think so.
If DNR was involved, I could see where there would be some benefits.
Excellent. Well, if, what I'll do is I'll pass on the, some questions, have him forward us the answers, and then we can come all from there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No other items under communications. Move on to the treasurer's report, Rob.
Okay, thank you. We'll start by looking at our financial reports for the month ended February 29th. Our cash reconciliation report provides us with some information on fund balances. At Farmers and Merchant State Bank, balance at $10,881,393. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $135,713. Investments at Star Ohio total $3,236,021. At Morgan Stanley, $31,490,328. And at State Bank, $4,011,863. Petty cash and change funds total $7,750. Total fund balance at the end of February, $49,491,641. Of those amounts, the general fund balance was $9,738,39. Permanent improvement fund, $2,146,113. Our locally funded initiative building fund, $2,976,128. Our local share of the construction project, our funds total $27,148,186. And the state funds provided the balance there, $6,567,308. Once again, total funds on hand, $49,491,641. And I've got some two reports, total revenues and other financing sources. Your report indicates that we're under budget by $387,000. That is due to the fact that our revenues for the property tax allocation, personal property replacement money, I had budgeted those revenues to come in in February. They will not arrive until May. So, that variance right there makes up quite a bit of difference.
Is there reasons for the delay?
With, pardon?
Is there reasons for the delay?
They changed the law in the budget and I always. I always budgeted them in February as they came in previously.
That's when you got them.
And this year, they're going to come in in May. So, our actual variance without that item is positive $227,237. And our expenses were $291,396 under budget, so we're $518,633, positive variance. Any questions on that report? If not, we will move on to amended appropriations. Appropriations at the end of February total $25,914,134. Some of the changes during the month is increase for the general fund, $100,000. Food service, an increase of $2,188. District managed activities, decrease of $180. Grants, decrease of $15,850. Permanent improvement fund, an increase of $21,375. Our building project, local funded initiative, an increase of $3,244. On the building project itself, increase of $58,138. School supplies, uniform school supplies, a decrease of $10,000. Our tournament fund, an increase of $12,082. Total appropriation modifications, an increase of $170,997. Some donations during the month. We'd like to acknowledge a donation received from the Bryan Area Foundation for our Bryan High School Orchestra Electrify Your Strings program. They donated $7,500 for that program. We thank the Bryan Area Foundation for this generous donation. We have a resolution to go out to bid with the Metropolitan Education Council as the purchasing consortium that we belong to, for two school buses, 71 passenger school buses. Once this resolution is approved, then we can move forward with Metropolitan Education Council to receive those bids and bring those to the board next month for approval for two new school buses that we'd like to purchase for the next school year. Any questions on those items? If not, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Accept the motion for Rob's treasurer's report.
So, who?
Tom? Emily?
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Old business. Facility update.
Okay. Thank you. Happy to report that, once again, we've been blessed with some great weather this month, and we've seen tremendous progress both inside and outside of the building. I'll ask Tom and Glenn to share as well, and I know, Cinder, you walked through the building recently. We have, on the inside, we have painting, we have drywall going up, we have terrazzo floor going in, in the bathrooms and in some of the corridors of the hallways. The windows are going in on much of the first floor. Those can be seen from Fountain Grove Drive as well. The brick on the exterior is making great progress around the front of the building, which can be seen from passing the road. And the inside in the courtyard, that brick has all been washed and cleaned, and we're starting to shape the courtyard and flatten that, and Tom can speak to that way more than I can. But very pleased with the progress. We do have two important meetings coming up. This Thursday, we will meet with our core team, and as we've been talking about for quite some time, we will have a, take a really hard look at the schedule and the, and the completion date, make sure that we are on track. And then a week from tomorrow, on Tuesday, the 29th, we will be meeting to discuss the pre-K to five renovation project and to negotiate a GMP for that. So, Tom or Glenn, anything that you'd like to share, or Cinder, your impressions of the building so far? I know it's difficult, but.
Were you impressed with the?
I, I was really impressed, having been very early in the project when I went, when I went through it, all the drywall that is going up. And it amazes me that it's going to be done in time. Glenn reassured me that just in the week, the week he was there to when I was there, a week later, I went through it, and Glenn as well, how much work had been done, just that he saw in the, in the week. And I'm just overwhelmed and proud, and it's great.
I know Tom and I both are periodically stopping in to kind of just walk through the building, and I think one of the concerns at this point in time is finishing that courtyard. That's, that's one of the priorities for them is to get that area finished off, dried up, the foundations in, grinded off, dried up. You know, in that, in the design of that building, literally, you have to start from the inside out. And once they have that completed, that, that will relieve a lot of their tension, I guess, as far as the project is concerned. A lot of windows keep arriving on site, and they were sharing with me the plan of the order, where the windows are going in, and obviously, the mason is moving the brick on the outside. They're making tremendous progress on that. But walking through it, it really is, it's like an anthill in there, if we put it for the best description. There are so many different crews working on so many different projects simultaneously that you just wonder how it's all being coordinated. But the, the project manager assures me, Dan, said if he's right on track, he feels good about it. Again, for me, not being in that business, it's difficult for me to realize that, yes, it is all going to come together, but they feel fairly confident that everything's on track as long as the materials keep arriving and we continue to have favorable weather. But it is really unique being able to walk through it right now, and each time you go through it, you can see the progress that's being made. When you see areas that are finished off and you realize, you know, that the rest of the building will be finished off that way, it's, all I can say is that it's going to be very nice when it's completed, and I think that people will be amazed and they will be very surprised at the thought that went into it that long term. If there's ever a need to change room designs, it's going to be a very easy process, the way that the building is, is laid out. And Tom, do you have anything you, you want to add?
No, you know, we pretty much covered all the points. I mean, just from week to week now, the, the amount of progress is just truly noticeable. I mean, it's significant. They, they're finishing up the masonry and the kitchen area, and after that, the only, well, the kitchen area and the music room areas, they had to top out those walls, take them up to the underside of the deck. But once that masonry is done, the only masonry, interior masonry that is truly left to be finished is the work in the locker rooms, the two locker rooms, the east and west end of the gymnasium, and then obviously, the event entrance. You know, the, some of the really important stuff is, that needed to be delivered is, is onsite and actually in the building now, all the air handling and heating equipment is pretty much in place. They're assembling it, you know. Like I said, the, the progress from week to week now is just truly, you know, significant in terms of the tools, you know, amount of work being done. I don't know, I didn't get a count, but I'm guessing we got something like 130, 540 workers on the job every day now. There are a lot of bodies. The masonry, I know I'm talking with the mason, they, once they go down the east face of the academic portion, then they're going to drop back and complete the towers. That's probably two, two of the three towers. Those would be two significant portions that are yet to be completed, but, you know, we're fast getting to the point where the building's going to be totally enclosed and they're going to be able to start controlling the temperature, which is critical for finishing. And, you know, it's, I know I'm talking with some of the workers out there, they, they think that it will be, it will be done on time, so.
Does the board have any other questions regarding the progress of the building?
One of the processes that always, that's amazing right now is the terrazzo flooring. That is some real skilled labor, but to, to put that floor, and I know it's very permanent, and we're paying a little extra for the, for the durability of that long term, but that is a very slow process. And again, you look at the area that they have to cover, they have to stay on top of this if they're going to meet their deadline. But again, just some of the quality of the material that's going in, Tommy, we, he, he was the first to point it out, the quality of the windows that we're using, they are industrial strength. I mean, they're very high quality windows, and when they're sealed shut, it's, it's quiet. And to me, it's also really surprising, the amount of natural light that, that comes into the building by design. And so, again, it's going to be a very, very efficient building when we get done.
We also wanted to talk a little bit this evening about the properties that we have in the schools. Again, as a reminder to the community that we will look to move students next year to the old high school, so grades two to five will be at the old high school next year. Washington students will stay put for one more year. Preschool students will stay put for one more year at Central. We will work to auction off some loose furnishings and other items at an auction this fall at Lincoln. But there's lots of questions about, you know, what the board plans to do with the properties. So, Ryan, just as a reminder, we wanted to take a few minutes to just discuss that as well.
Thank you.
I'll turn to our review.
Okay. Yeah, I know, one of the things that's been brought up a number of times to me in the community is, what are we going to be doing with the existing facilities? And the plans were, when we made the initial levy campaign that the voters graciously supported and the original plans for the facilities, was that as we moved everyone then out of those facilities here, it was advertised that we were then going to take down the existing facilities and remove those properties and then address those properties as we need to at that point in time. To my knowledge, that's still the plan of Bryan City Schools to continue on that path. Now, the first one that we'll have to deal with, that we'll be dealing with is Lincoln School, which, which will be vacating next year. And then Bryan High School and Washington School will be something we'll address then the following year.
Correct.
Because we'll still be occupying those facilities. You know, I don't, I don't want to close any door by any means, but that said, I still see us going down that path because those facilities were aged, did have some structural issues, which is what necessitated us moving forward with us. So, inside of any revelations or ideas that come along outside that I'm not aware of at this point in time, I still see us going down that path.
This last week, Tom and I met with the Business Advisory Board for Board of Education, and we presented them with all of the different scenarios, and there was unanimous consensus from that group that their recommendation to us was to remove the buildings as planned because we have funds in place for, for their removal, and we feel that the worst thing that could happen would be to have a, an isolation in our community or a building that is not maintained and decreases values around it.
I appreciate the feedback.
But Brian, I'm blue to the fact that there were structural issues and also the asbestos and there are safety issues for anybody that would move into a building, but they don't have the funds or the ability to abate those safety issues. We, we can't be responsible for that.
Absolutely.
So, I agree with that original plan, demolish the building, call me the funds to do it.
Thanks, Emily. Any other updates as far as the facilities or usage of the facilities that we're not aware of, Diana, at this point in time, or Rob, that you might be aware of?
No, just that, on the project itself, we have bid the furnishings and the technology those bids are in. They're being analyzed. I would also be the architect at this time. I think some meetings were held last week. Just, you know, that's another key issue, get those items placed on orders and get those orders made on time. That's another key issue that's fixing this right now.
If I might just, a point of interest relative to the school of pride, because we're talking about furnishings, I know I'm talking with the Fetter's Construction since that just falls into their scope of work. The casework is going to be delivered for the school here, I think, the first week in, in April, so that just gives you an idea of how far along the project really is.
And for us to work on construction, guys, that's, the casework is like covers.
Cover, there you go. What do you mean?
Shelving, countertop shelving.
Covertop shelving, covers.
Anything that is attached to the wall and used for storage and, you know, the labs, all of that, those fixtures, those furnishings are going, like I said, will be delivered here sometime the first week or so of April. I mean, there are things that are going to go into the building when it is completed that are on the near horizon, so that just really gives you an idea of just how far along things really are.
Okay, and our only other old business updates, as a reminder, because we have our key meeting next week with the state and the core team, we will then talk more about the school calendar for the 16-17 school year at our April board meeting. For, as a reminder, because of our closures, students will now be in school in session normal days on April 18th, May 31st, and June 1st. And that will provide for the three days over the five that we have closed. I don't anticipate any future closures, but if we were to close, we've used up our contingency days, and then barring any blizzards or earthquakes or natural disasters that would keep us out for an extended period of time, we are sitting very good with our student makeup hours at this point. Never know, but it's looking good.
Things have happened.
Things have happened. That's all I have for old business unless there are questions or other.
Thank you, Diana.
Okay.
As there's no items on the agenda under new business, move on to some superintendents recommendations.
Okay, under administrative recommendations, first of all, for your review and approval, we have a contract for photography services for our extracurricular events only. This includes our athletic teams, our plays, our spring musicals, our music groups, our proms, our graduation, our homecoming. our proms, our graduation, our homecoming. And that would be with Studio Thirty-four. Um, and this will run from now until the end of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. We did accept bids for this. This was our lone local builder and comes highly recommended from some other schools as well as from Prospect Acres, our previous, um, contact with this service. And then you also have for your approval, uh, the eighth grade overnight trip request. Uh, the eighth grade was successful in raising enough funds to head back to Chicago. That's scheduled for Thursday, May nineteenth to Friday, May twentieth. The agenda is included in your packet. Students will be, uh, having the opportunity to visit the museum of science and industry, the Medieval Times Dinner Theater, the Lincoln Park Zoo, Navy Pier. So I know the students are looking forward to that. Um, if you have any questions, Mr. Reary or I could address those as well.
Thank you, Diana. Motion to accept those recommendations if there are no questions. Emily, second.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under commendations at the high school, we have our students of action, our Juana Students of the Month. We'd like to congratulate our high school orchestra for receiving a superior rating at the O M E A Northwest Region State Orchestra Contest. They were very excited about their one rating. In state swimming, we'd like to congratulate Ashley Franks as well as Elizabeth Hord, Hannah Nguyen, and Izzy Riggs, who made up our relay team. Ashley participated both in the relay and in the, um, individual events. And then also Jordan Easley, who participated in the state girls' bowling tournament. At the middle school, we'd like to recognize our Ike's Top Dogs for hardworking and our students of action for hardworking. At Lincoln Elementary and Washington Elementary, we'd like to recognize our hardworking students and our P E gold slip winners. Tyler Clark at Lincoln, Adam Sparks, and Cassie McDade at Washington. And then our character bearer classroom of the month was Mrs. Schilling, Mrs. Boyer, and Mrs. Sanders, first grade classrooms.
Thank you. Cinder will move to accept, uh, commendations.
One second.
Tom, second, thank you.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under personnel recommendations, I would like to recommend for hire and approval of the board, Karen Cox is our Director of Elementary Education. This would be effective on August first, two thousand sixteen. And along with that, a contract addendum, which allow her to get started this summer working in that position. Karen, uh, we had a great team that interviewed our candidates and Karen was selected as our Director of Elementary Education and she is very excited, um, to have this opportunity with Bryan City Schools. And I know that she has already begun to do some background and research work into this position. So I recommend her for board approval. I also recommend a one-year limited teaching contract for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year to Olivia Elkins as our seven through twelve Spanish teacher. Olivia has a bachelor's degree with two years' experience on the A-one salary schedule. Teacher transfer is effective for next school year. Josh Montgomery to grade six social studies, Julie Scribner to grade three classroom teacher, and Dan Slagle to grade four intervention teacher. I would like to recommend that the board approve a reduction in force for the following position, middle school science teaching full-time. With the, um, transition to the new building and to the six to twelve staffing levels, we were based on our student enrollment in the science department, um, overstaffed by one percent at this point, so we are recommending that that position be eliminated. Transfer of Kelly Bean to Lincoln Campus Classroom, lunch duty dismissal aide, four point seven five hours per day, effective March seventh. Bridget Smith to Lincoln Campus Research Classroom aide, four point seven five hours per day, effective April fourth. Would like to recommend with regrets, the resignation of Tiffany Knight Ride as our athletic trainer, that will be effective June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen. And then a non-renewal of our winter supplemental, non-certificated staff. Again, as a reminder to the board, this is not a reflection of their performance, but is an annual action because these coaches are hired outside of the system. And then substitutes, we have some new classified and new teacher substitutes to add to our list. Any questions regarding the personnel recommendations?
If no questions, I'll be willing to accept the motion. I move to support the personnel recommendations for the month. Glenn, thank you.
One second.
Tom?
Thank you.
Emily?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Points of information?
I do have one point of information. So Chad, you may touch on this a little bit, so I apologize in advance if you're going to... There's been a lot of talk with, last month, we talked about our grade card results and since then, there's been a lot of talk about what do they mean and comparison of schools who tested with paper pencil versus testing online. So we made the conscious decision to test our third graders using paper pencil because we don't feel that they're ready for the transfer of information electronically when you have to read a passage and then transfer to a different sheet to answer the question. But for our grades four through twelve, we test online. There was a significant difference in the performance of students who tested online versus those who tested paper and pencil. However, in response to that, the state issued a statement last week. They did review, including sending it to such highly credentialed teams of experts from leading universities and organizations such as NASA that have verified that the tests are in fact equal and comparable and that this evidence, although it may truly show this evidence that there really is not a difference between the online test and the paper pencil.
The paper and pencil test the students perform better.
Way better, according to the state results.
So why would we want to use a system that doesn't?
According to, did you say NASA?
NASA was one of the...
National Aeronautics and Space Administration.
Yes.
Okay. So let's be clear on that.
Who?
So it's not testing knowledge?
NASA, space shovels.
No, 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 no.
Hubble telescope.
Who?
This is the O D E?
This is O D E's release to the question...
And we also look at it, so that computer test must be great.
The question that, that was being raised. The bottom line for us is we are not happy with our results. And we are working very hard with our teaching staff to look at what changes we can make. We've already started some discussions. I think that Mark and Chad and Scott, if he were able to be with us, would tell you that teachers are definitely aware that they need to make changes and are willing to look at those and we're already trying to find ways that we can make that happen. So we are not going to necessarily discredit the results that we've got received. We certainly think that we are a better school district than what was shown on that grade card. But we are willing to work harder next year to make things better. So again, I'll, um, if you go to O D E's website, you can see the whole statement about the comparison of the tests, um, but that is the latest release from August.
Was the test the same for online as it was for written or were there two different?
There were two different tests. There was a paper version and an online version.
Okay.
Did state really encourage you last year to take it online?
Sure.
Um, so we did, thinking that was the, um...
That's the direction we're going.
You signed up in September to declare with the paper or online. State was pushing online, everybody thought, how do people think? This is the way to go because this is the future of how you're going to test. You might as well jump in thinking these are going to be equal tests, which, what even NASA they are. So you don't, you don't know. There, there's been a push right now of, of school districts in Ohio trying to change back to paper. The state released a statement that said, that's not allowed, we're not doing that. Once again, you had to declare back in, I think, October, September, October, before results were released. How are you going to test this year?
Park testing was big money for the people who developed and administered that, uh, this program. And that's something you need to talk to, uh, elected officials about.
But we lasted for one year.
Correct, yeah. It was big money for the people that developed and administered that.
Okay. I appreciate the efforts of the teachers and administrators to try and, one, find what is part of the issue, but also step to the plate and say, hey, no matter what, we're going to do better. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate the effort that they're putting forth, uh, to move us forward as a district. Thank you.
That's where we want to be. So we'll turn it over to our administrative reports. Um, Mr. Hord is unavailable this evening as he is interviewing some prospective teachers this, tonight. So we're going to start with Mr. Ruffer.
Mrs. Sav is already kind of spoiling my partner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's pretty good at that, I guess, tonight. We did have a bowler that went stage and then, uh, several swimmers. We had, we had a relay team and then one individual at two little events. On top of that, there's not a whole lot to report from sports. We're kind of out with the old end with the new winters wrapped up. Um, we're starting spring stuff now, um, track and junior, junior high and high school track. And then boys tennis started, uh, last week, I believe. And then baseball and softball have been going after a while. Baseball and softball, I had a scrimmage Saturday, um, and then they were out there tonight. Went out for a little bit, watched a couple innings here and there. So they're getting rolling, kind of excited, warming up a little bit from time to time, certain days. Went too bad out there as long as they're on the ground. So we're just kind of done with the old, end with the new, and here we go. Yeah, so that's about all I have.
Any questions for Eric?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bassett?
Hi, well, Mrs. Sav, it's testing season again. We actually start tomorrow. This is a new test the state developed as well. Used to be called the Otella. Um, now it's the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment. It's for our L E P, our Limited English Proficient Household. We start tomorrow. That is moved for the first time online.
So they can't speak English, but now they're going to say it through?
Yeah, they actually press into a microphone and speak into, into the computer. And that one you have, really have no choice because even if you do it paper pencil, you have to plug it in online, so there really wasn't, um, an option. So we're going to start that tomorrow, um, see how that goes. Working through, it's a small population of kids. Then we get into the full-blown testing when we come back after, um, spring break. Third grade, once again, is paper pencil. Everyone else is the online, um, one-to-one with their computer. Text-to-speech features, they listen, if they have a, a reading issue, um, they do, they read the text to them and they plug in some earbuds and it reads the text to them. That's a, that's a nice feature. The language on that, it's not like a robotic computer. It's a pretty nice, um, language you get back from, um, so that's pretty good. I do have some good news. Um, I talked a couple of months ago about, um, our I D E A B, which is our special education one of our grant fundings. We are in an audit for that this year. Um, just got the news, there were no findings, we're complete compliance, so I'm happy to see that.
Good. Thank you, Chad.
Can you just say any technological problems with this new testing? Because it's a new system and they paid more people more money.
Yeah, I, I don't, because last year, we had Park and we had Air. And this year, we're all Air. I can tell you, last year, Air was much smoother in using it than Park. It was much more user-friendly, so I'm hoping. You know, last year, we had an airport that went bad. Things we can't foresee that shut us down for twenty minutes till we replaced an airport and we're back up testing. I really think that our, our infrastructure of technology is so good that we're going to be fine.
So we're lucky then.
Yes, absolutely.
The other advantage that we have this year for grades seven through twelve is they'll all have their own machine that they've been working on all school year. So they'll be very familiar with the machine and Air works best on Chromebooks, correct?
Yes, correct.
And so again, based on what we know from last year, the one that gave us the most trouble is Out off the Board. And so the test that we had success with as far as taking the test, um, it was a much smoother.
It was, it just, it, it's hard to see without seeing it. You need to see it, the experience and just the manipulation of the computer with the kids. It's much easier in Air. Um, it's much easier from a teacher standpoint.
Not for your secretary?
It is, yeah, yeah. It just flows better, I guess.
Mr. Ray?
Speaking of testing, we're, and I'm Mr. Bassett, they were starting, um, very soon, but at the middle school grade levels, we're starting right, we'll be back in spring break, um, starting the week of April fourth, and high school, um, testing will start the week of April eighteenth. So we're on the horizon here in the coming month. We had an event scheduled for, um, a, a day in March called CEO Wednesday and we just happened to have the luck of Mother Nature, um, not on our side. So we are rescheduling that event and that's coming up on Wednesday, April sixth, when we return from spring breaks. We're going to have, um, twenty-five local business representatives interviewing our seniors and, and put them through a mock interview experience to prepare them for life outside of Bryan High School doors. So we're looking forward to that. Um, speaking of interviews, our seniors are interviewing tomorrow and Wednesday for the Bryan Harry Foundation Scholarship, so wish them luck as they go into those interviews in the coming days. We did, as a result, again, have another, um, weather day have, have to reschedule Blood Mobile. So if you want to donate blood, we're having that taking place tomorrow in the high school gym. Our, our orchestra was noted to get a superior rating or a rating of one at their state level performance. Our a cappella group actual, um, just, actually just got a superior rating as well in their recent contest. So they're advancing on to a state level contest in Van Buren at the end of April. So we're going to wish them luck as well. And our musical is coming up, believe it or not, in a few weeks. I know they're, they've been hard at work, putting in a lot of audition time, practice time. So that's the weekend of the fifteenth, fifteenth, and seventeenth at the Arts End Auditorium. So come on out and check it out. It's Bye Bye Birdie, that's the musical for the spring. And just an update on the inter, I know there's a lot happening externally with the construction happening at the, at the new facility, but we are also excited. We're continuing to move forward as a six-call staff with the building on our master schedule, for our teachers and students to follow once we're in that, in the building. And we're, are starting to iron out, at least not on paper, we're going to have to live it once or twice, but some of the arrival procedures, the dismissal procedures and lunches. And so we're starting to really handle that out now that, um, the building is taking shape and we're getting more and more ready for that move. So we're excited, so if you have questions, good for answers. Thank you.
Mark? With no other items that I have before the board, we do have a need for executive session this evening. Under A, appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, license, or student, as well as under item D on our agenda, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. So if I could, uh, ask for a motion to enter as an executive session. Emily? And Tom?
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
I don't expect any action out of this, however, if there is, we'll be sure to let you know. Thank you.